All right, thank you very much. Officer Marino, Paul Barnes is next, followed by Eric Rudy.
Mayor and City Council, there's many reasons for us finding ourselves in the position we are tonight, and I have my own list. First, last year, you made a very bad decision to prematurely cut the food tax, and you also made a bad decision by accepting an overly aggressive increase in revenues. I share the Vice Mayor's position that I think you're to blame for that. You can't just lay it off all on staff. You're responsible. You should have known better. Secondly, there was a program scaring of the employees and the citizens during these 20-some budget hearings. It was planned, it was programmed, and unfortunately, it seems to have worked. Three, we have political posturing, and I think you all know what I mean by that. Fourthly, there's a lack of leadership. And if you combine these four items, this is the reason we're here tonight, and it's a very sad situation. I have to say, as far as the City Council's discussion on the broken process on negotiations, I find that a bit hypocritical. When you predetermined with the City Manager and the City Council what the outcome of negotiations are going to be, how do you have a fair negotiating process? How do you expect to have anything different than what we have seen here tonight? Jam down the throats of these union employees. You can't go at it that way. You have to work differently. I take exception, I think, to the Reverend's suggestion that we have walkouts. Our employees are better than this. I don't see them following or pursuing that course of action. These officers are the best of the best. And I know that no matter what happens tonight, they're going to go out, and they're going to do their jobs, and they're going to protect us just as they have every single day. The only thing I would ask is that you continue to put them in a position where they can go out and do that job with a smile. And they're not going to be able to do that if we continue in this process that you're going at tonight. So, I would also like to see this continued, and try to have a situation where we come to a reasonable negotiation with plea. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barnes. All right, Eric Rudy is next, and then followed by Barb Heller.
Good evening. Last week, I spoke to you, and I expressed my belief that this city's experiencing more of a priority crisis than a budget crisis. And then earlier this afternoon, I heard Councilman Williams make a comment that the city has slashed to the bone. I would respectfully disagree. Several examples have been presented to the contrary, and I think what has happened and is continuing to happen with that Melrose Arch is a glaring monument to the contrary. Which leads me to Margaret T. Hans Park renovation, which Officer Yingling briefly touched on, and I'd like to expand on that issue. Late March, the city unveiled its ambitious plan, $118 million renovation for that park. Granted, I know it's cost that's going to be extended over a 10-year period, but after the city's already aware of a budget problem, to make the decision to move forward with what is essentially a nonessential luxury item, nonessential city project, when we're experiencing this crisis right now, is incomprehensible. I respectfully ask members of this Congress, or the City Manager, somebody, please explain to me, fellow police officers, fellow city workers, and the citizens of this city, why this park renovation should take priority over taking care of city employees, not just police officers, but all city employees right now who are facing cuts, respecting the process, and honoring the promises the city made to the employee groups during the last two contract negotiations, those promises still have not been fulfilled, and the hiring of police officers. Please explain to me why we cannot reallocate that $118 million for those three purposes. To me, that would be an honorable way to show that you are cutting to the bone and finding innovative solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric Rudy. I appreciate the comments, although I want to ensure there's accurate information relative to Hans Park. It has been referenced a couple times, so this council adopted a proposed master plan of what a future design would look like, no money has been allocated. I think it gives the opportunity for the public to go raise private dollars to try to facilitate that, but I want to make sure there's accurate information on that particular issue. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, thank you. Yes, the Hans Park is a master plan. It is not a funding plan. It has set out the community's desires for Hans Park, for future fundraising, as you said, but it has not, there has not been money spent beyond the planning process at this point.
All right, thank you very much. Barb Heller, it will be the next speaker, and followed by Robert Pitts.
First and foremost, to all the men and women who wear the badge, and your families, you're God's special angels. I love and respect you. You are my heroes, and this is wrong. You deserve better than this. Council, where are your priorities? Promises were made, but now you seem to put other projects and contracts before the men and women who risk their lives every day for us. No other contracts are more important than these men and women. You do this, and you may lose what officers are left. The morals already suck. All this crap is putting a huge target on these officers' backs. Criminals and gang bangers think they have a free run on this city because of all this talk, and they're running over the top of our officers. That's wrong. When it comes down to it, you hold the purse strings. You allowed this budget mess. So did the new city manager. He was the assistant manager at the time. So you should take the hit, not the officers. They aren't asking for raises. They ask for what you took already. Stick to the process, and your word. You said a little while ago, you will take all suggestions. Then take this as my suggestion. Stop spending what we don't have. Employees come first, not last.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. Robert Pitts is next, followed by Matt Roers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Pitts. I've been on the City of Phoenix Police Department for 20 years, as an officer, and now as a detective. I'm also a resident of the City of Phoenix. Mr. DeCiccio, I live in your district. I've asked a question many times to my bargaining unit, "Why are we here?" And I'm continually told, "We're here because there's not enough money," or it's been told to us that there's not enough money to pay us. And I have to ask, why are these, why are we not, why do we not have this money if we're on such a high, or high-revenue year? And I keep getting told that there are projects with funds that are earmarked for them. In my house, I have to live under a balanced budget. My wife and I try and plan for different things, and we earmark money for certain projects. Occasionally, I have a blowout on the truck. My air conditioner goes out. I have another project. I have to take from that earmarked fund, and I have to use it for other things. Last Wednesday night, and this, and tonight, you've heard different cost-saving measures from some of your best resources out here, from all the different city employees. Use those. Stop doing this as lip service. Take those words, take those advi, or those suggestions, and implement them. You have the resources with the financial officers to implement their plans. They're the experts there. You have the exports, experts in the financial area. Please do this. It's important to me, it's important to every other officer, it's important to every city employee, because we are one cohesive unit. I find it ironic that we're even thinking about looking at new officers when we can't even pay the officers that we have. I have to ask, what is more important? These new projects, or these slated future projects, or your current city employees? Thank you very much. Please respect the process.
Thank you, Officer. Matt Roers, followed by Robert Warren. Matt, are you here? All right, I'll put that card aside, he's able to, if he had to leave for a moment. Robert Warren, did you surprise testimony?
Yeah, I'll leave, yes. Go to work in the morning.
All right, thank you. So, Robert Warren, we'll make a note of that. For the record, how about Thomas Romano? Thank you for being here, Officer.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I spoke last week about how I was critically injured in the line of duty. I could rehash that, but I'm not going to this time. I think we need to move forward and have different speeches. To borrow words from Councilman DeCiccio, "Promises made, promises kept." Years ago, Phoenix officers gave up paying benefits when we were asked. City promised that on the back end, they would be restored. While half were returned to officers, the rest were promised, have not been. Now, on top of that, you want to take more away from us. When we attempted to try to get these benefits back, we played by the rules. We went back-finding. We abided by their decisions. Now that the decision's in our favor, it seems the process does not want to be honored. That's unacceptable. Even with all these funds not returned to the city, to the city employees, or Phoenix officers, there still needs to be, I'm sorry, there still are ways that raises were given to certain people in certain positions, and on top of that, pay scales were adjusted to justify those raises. The new line is how we all need to make sacrifices. Well, I can tell you, as an officer, we make sacrifices every day. We put on our uniform, we go to work. We sacrifice holidays, we've sacrificed time away from our families, missed moments in children's lives. When it comes to work, we have made sacrifices as well. We are now over 500 fewer officers, more calls in volume, we have more officers continuing to retire with no sight of replacements. We sacrifice by knowing many may not return home from our shift every time we strap on our uniforms. Officers are not like other departments. Officers are unique in knowing when we go to work, we're going to get yelled at, spit on, punched, and sadly, even shot. We deal with humanity at its worst, yet we still come to work. Sometimes we come battered, sometimes we come bruised, sometimes we come missing our children grow up, or an important meal with our spouses, but we still come, because it's our job. It's what we promised we would do. Please put politics aside, put ego aside. Don't look at us just as ones and zeros. Look at us as who we are. We are citizens. We are officers of this city.
Thank you, Officers Safranca, for your patience here tonight. The hour's getting late, and your willingness to stay and provide testimony. Thank you for being here. Good to see you.
I just found out about this meeting late this afternoon, and I know I had to come. I've been in meetings with Mayor Stanton and with the City Manager, and one of the things that has been a constant echoing theme has been, "I don't know. I'm not sure. I have to check," from our City Manager. To me, from a business perspective, that is totally unacceptable. How can you say you're coming up with a budget or a balanced budget if you can't prove the numbers? Now, I have two children, a daughter with disabilities, and a granddaughter with severe autism. There's been a lot of times when my children have gotten turned around, and it's either been the big red taxi, which is the fire department, or it's been the blue car coming down to return my children to me. These two groups are very near and dear to me. They're very special, like the gentleman just said. When they leave in the morning, they don't know if they're going to return. Every one of you up there on the console, unless you have an unforeseen accident, you're not facing that kind of strife, but our officers are. I am running for the State House of Representatives, and I've been out there talking to the people. And Mayor Stanton, when I came to your one meeting, I brought to you the information from a number of my prospective constituents, where they said, "There's a lot of drug dealing going on in Mayor Hans Park. Can't we have officers there?" And I was told that the officers were taken out of there for the holidays, because they needed them in the shopping centers and whatever. But they still haven't come back. The drug dealing continues. So, we need to support our police officers, and by God, I will be there to support you wherever I can. I belong to the 100 Club, and I've served, and come down, and volunteered when we have a fallen officer. So, please, don't take any more funds away from these wonderful officers.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cortez. Dan Garcia, I hope I pronounced that correctly, or Garcia, followed by Carol Bartholomew.
Don Garcia. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm a registered voter and live in Council District Number One. As a resident, I'm saddened by the extent of our city's financial mismanagement. Although I find it unfortunate this council has been misled, misled by those responsible, I find it offensive, this council is thinking once again of laying the fiscal burden onto the employees, not just the Police Department, but all the employees. When the federal government wanted to bail out Wall Street and the mortgage industry, it did not make the federal employees show the cost. No. Everyone in the country contributed their fair share to help the government right this ship. Our city's situation is no different. Four years ago, your employees agreed to concessions to fix the budgetary crisis. Two years ago, plea in the city utilized a third-party, non-bias fact-finder to resolve our contract impasse. The arbitrator agreed with the city, and plea accepted the finding in good faith. Regarding contract negotiations this year, it appears all the other unions reached an impasse as well, and had to utilize arbitration to resolve their respective contractual conflicts. The fact an independent party reviewed all the data provided by the city and the union is significant, because the city is now attempting to back out of the agreement, and is forcing this City Council to make the decision. It might appear this council needs a support in either-or. That is not the case. Instead, I suggest you are not supporting plea or the city mismanager, but instead, following the recommendations of the qualified, non-bias, third-party who had the opportunity to be given all the facts. For the record, I do not think any city employee should have to concede more pay or benefits to bail out our city again, but I believe the findings of the fact-finders for each union to be significantly more important. When you vote, please keep these recommendations in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol Bartholomew, followed by Brian Kelly. Good to see you again.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I am Carol Bartholomo, second-generation, native Arizonan, GoWater Republican, not GoWater Institute, and a business owner. In the movie Dave, actor Kevin Kline as the President brought in an accountant to balance the budget. That was funny. This budget is neither funny, it is, and the city spending is frightening. When Officer Hobbs was killed and Officer Casados injured, plea put on a benefit for the Hobbs and Casados families. Thanks to the public, the media, many city workers, we raised more than $100,000 in one day for the families. Phoenix police officers saved my life on two occasions. I trust our Phoenix police officers. Trust? Who on the council can I trust to keep a tight, transparent reign on our budget? Once again, I ask the Mayor and Council to work together to bring in more sustainable business income to Phoenix. I've had several successful conference calls via Skype with Avon this year. Meetings in the 21st century don't require travel. I applaud Sal for his request to postpone a decision until May 13th, and thanks to Bill and to Mr. Waring. How can you vote on something so important with less than half the information that you need to make an informed decision? Whose fault is it that the Mayor and Council are so ill-prepared? The fault lies with the Mayor and Council, and the City Manager and his staff. May 13th is not cut in stone. You have seven weeks. The spirit of St. Louis was built in 60 days. You can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Brian Kelly is next.
Before I start, let me tell you, you can save a few dollars in the city by turning the air conditioner up in here to something above the freezing level. As most of these officers will find out, if you go through with this pay cut, they'll be doing that this summer, just to be able to pay their bills. My name is Brian Kelly. I'm a retired police officer after 25 years with the City of Phoenix, but I'm not here tonight just because of my brothers in blue. I'm here tonight because I'm also a tax-paying, voting resident in Felda Williams District Number One, and I'm concerned about where we're headed with this budget and cutting these police officers. I want to talk a minute about the sacrifices they make day-to-day. One officer mentioned it, with the work shifts, the three work shifts, the holidays work, the family events that they miss as their kids grow up. I know I missed many of them myself, probably more so than any other work unit, because of the crazy hours that are unstable throughout your entire career at the Police Department. Talk a little bit about the sacrifices they made over the last couple of years. The sacrifices with the increase in health care, the decrease in pay with a hollow promise that that pay would be returned to them. And then ultimately, too, the sacrifice that they made by, that they make every day now with the cuts in personnel. There's been a lot of talk here tonight about police being different, and I'll tell you where they're different. And Councilman Gao, I'm going to call you out on this one. Earlier, you were talking about how the cuts in other agencies, and you drove down the street, and you saw dead trees. Dead trees, really? Well, the cuts in this agency, at 521 people short, leads to dead police officers. There's a little bit of a difference. Today, you ask them to make another, yet another sacrifice, and it's not a sacrifice that's their responsibility. It's a sacrifice that's a responsibility of the city. You caused this, not these police officers. Chief Garcia, I'm going to call you out once today, and it's very simply this. This is not a management-labor issue today. This is about your police officers, their morale, and the income that they deserve, and this is your opportunity to stand by your people and ask that the council not do this today, that they not cut these police officers. And I, one more quick thing, the Honorable Councilman from District Seven made a grandstanding speech earlier tonight about how he was ready to do something, "I just got to figure out what it's going to be." Well, I'll tell you what it is. It's, you take a stand, you do something different. You take a stand right here today, and you say no to this issue.
Scott Leahy, did you surprise testimony on this aisle? Followed by Greta Rogers.
I want to thank you for being here and listening, showing a commandment to us, and to each one of you that stepped out there to protect all of us, thank you very much. I want to challenge you to be executors. Now, you have to execute. I would suggest this is more of a crisis than a budget deficit anymore. I've been watching this happen now, and let me tell you, this is actually a bit of a crisis, if you ask me. I have an idea. You know, you've heard about the 2% food tax that was rescinded, based on faulty information. That's understandable. That's a mistake that can happen. But, there needs to be some strength in leadership. Maybe you should appeal to the public, since they're behind it to begin with, to help. That would be sharing the burden throughout the community. That's sharing the burden. One other idea, since I work in water production, when's the last time water and sewer rates have gone up? And I, we're probably at a very, probably low to median. We have very good rates in water and sewer. How about raising revenues, a slight increase to buy a little time, so we can figure out how to manage the income, the assets better that are coming in? You're going to have to take stand on this and take a lead. Appeal to the public. I mean, the public does not want the services cut. That's clear. They would be more than willing, I'll bet. Stand? Maybe I will. But you are in a position to make this happen. Are you not? Please respond to us why you're so reluctant, or anyone is talking, or not talking about rescinding the 2% tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leahy. And I, also to be factual, I appreciate what you're saying. One, it's part of the budget process, not for today's discussion. It's part of the budget process. One of the items on the table is a proposed $1.50 fee on the water bill, not part of the enterprise fund, but a separate line of, there's currently a dollar on there. One of the ideas to raise revenue for the city is to add $1.50. I promise you, that will be highly controversial in the public and by members of the, of the council. I'm sure you're going to follow that debate very, very closely, about who supports those additional revenue, who doesn't. But, that is one of the proposed revenue items, is very close to what you had proposed. I want to make sure you're aware of that. We'll be having that debate as a council in the next two weeks. Actually, I'll turn to City Manager. That's a perfectly fair question. What is the proposed revenue idea relative to what would be on a water bill?
Thank you, Mayor. The item that's on phoenix.gov proposal is $1.50 per residential meter, and then there's a sliding scale for larger meters for non-residential, but the vast majority is the $1.50 per residential meter.
Per month?
Per month, correct, yeah. Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Leahy. Did you have something on that? Oh, I'm sorry. Greta Rogers is, is next, and then...
She got tired of the game, she went home.
Ms. Rogers had to go home?
Yes.
Okay. The next speaker will be Shelton Wright, followed by DeeDee Barker, if DeeDee's still here.
She went home, too.
Miss Barker went home? Is Shelton Wright here? All right, how about... Milena Fang? Good to see you. Thank you for being here, followed by Leonard Clark. Did you surprise testimony?
Hi, thank you to the three members who have already committed to protect our police officers. Thank you to my husband at home, and to all the officers here who put their lives on the line for us every day. My husband is a naturalized citizen. He was a Boy Scout. He was a Marine. He was an NYPD officer for four years, and has been a Phoenix police officer for almost 16 years. He is the sole provider of our family of seven. We are the same as any other police family. All us police families are a special breed of humans unlike most. The graphs submitted by city management seem to insinuate our officers are whiny, overpaid cops. In reality, Phoenix officers have taken the brunt of economic woes more than any other And more than just financially. For half a decade now, our Police Department has dwindled to just 80% of its full force, even though the... even though the population has increased. This means response times have increased from three minutes to six minutes. They're forced to patrol significantly larger and unfamiliar beats, and patrol cars with peeling paint and no AC. Amid reports of increasing crime, officer-involved shootings, and 911 calls put on hold. These officers are working harder for less pay, sometimes with unpaid overtime, and a more dangerous job under the weight of performance measures that amount to unofficial quotas, under brass who treat them like errant children, for an unprofitable city management and council. Officers' rates and hobs did not live long enough to see their pay cuts restored. I wonder if any officers here will live long enough to see their pay cuts restored. The epitome of disrespect by council members come from abuse of attendance of officer funerals by mayor and council members. The disrespect to police officers continues with forced pay cuts and hiring freezes year after year after year after year. With a vote for the cuts proposed, you as council members continue to show your disrespect for officers, city and officer safety, and your own lack of responsibility to keep the city safe. I am demanding a concrete plan from management and city council to develop revenue for purposes of returning the Phoenix Police Department to its full force and strength. My final question for you council members who have not already committed to support the police department: Is my husband's life worth 3.2% less? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fang, for being patient with the time here tonight. Mr. Clark? And then Anthony Navas is to follow. Mr. Clark, up to two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council member. As a citizen of Phoenix, I do have a part in this. First of all, I want to thank the officers and all the families for the sacrifices they make. It reminds me so much of a lot of fellow veterans and people who are serving, defending our country. I just think that there's a lot of fear going on. I don't blame you. You're politicians. You're worried if you bring up the word "tax," you know, our conservative friends on this council and around... And no offense, because that is your religious... I mean, religious... Your political views, that you can't even mention the word "tax," and people go ballistic. And so with dark money going on now, not ignoring... You're going to be attacked, you don't even want to bring it up. Well, I'm sorry. You should do the right thing, have some principles, and say, "We're going to have to have some slight increases in taxes." This food tax, for example. It's nice to say we'll cut to the bone, but when pressed, the very people who say that they support our officers, which I do, and I think the promises should be kept to them, when they're asked to raise taxes to do it, no. But we want to talk about all this talk about, "Well, we'll cut, you know, the landscaping here and there." I understand. I agree with that, too. But you have to face the facts. You can't always say no to taxes. We shouldn't be so afraid of the Goldwater Institute and all of these dark money groups. But you, as Democrats, as citizens of Phoenix on this council, to yourselves, not take leadership and say, "We want these increases," because you're afraid you'll not get elected again, afraid of... I'm sorry. You should do the right thing, even if it means you don't get elected again. Abraham Lincoln stood against a war, and he didn't get re-elected, you know, to Congress when he was in. So you have to do the... You should do the right thing. These officers are not general issue like we were considered in the military. So I kind of have a feeling like that. Sometimes you feel like you're just like some kind of commodity. They're not a commodity. Keep your promises to them. Don't be afraid of the dark money and the Goldwater Institute. And for my conservative friends on this council, with all due respect, you cannot expect to pay them what these officers deserve unless you're willing to raise revenue. Sorry, I know that's a dirty word, but you have to stop being so inflexible about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Navas. Is Anthony Navas here? How about Leo Buffa? Followed by Jerry Haas, H-A-A-S-E, I think.
You had to call out a bunch of names. They're sitting way over there, and I'll text them as soon as I get over there.
I'm sorry we're not running the meeting to your exacting specifications, Pat. I apologize. We'll try to do better in the future. And then Sheila Donahue. I called three, Pat, that's plenty.
Good evening. My name's Leo Buffa. I am a sergeant for the Phoenix Police Department. I've been on 20 years thus far. I promoted about five years ago. Just recently, it's been very clear that many people don't know the magnitude of just how many officers are assaulted each year. I was recently asked about that, and I found out that over between 900 and 1,100 officers are assaulted in Phoenix every year. That's just one city. In 2012, I was included in that statistic. As a patrol sergeant, I went to a call for service, and it ended in a violent encounter. It's a long story, but I ended up getting seriously hurt in four places, two of them I'll never fully recover from. In the short time that I've been on, and there's a lot of officers here that have been on a lot longer than me, I've seen 15 officers fall, give their lives. And they gave their lives. It wasn't taken from them. They didn't lose it. They gave it. They were going to the danger. They were serving our community. These officers, they require the highest trust, the highest authority that is given to them. The government, the local government here and the community, is what gives them that authority. We hold them to a high standard, and they're very deserving of it. These are the finest officers. These are the finest people in our state. These are the most selfless, gifted people, and they do a great job. We're not talking about giving them a wage. We're just trying to keep them have their base pay, their base wage. I wanted to come here last Wednesday, but I couldn't. I was honored to ask to read a name of one of the officers that was recognized during our second annual law enforcement memorial, Wayne Scott. My wife and I are dear friends with his widow and his child. She was unborn at the time. She's a wonderful 12-year-old young lady right now. We do our best in trying to look out after them. But this family is trying to do their best with their base wage that their husband made. Sadly, it's predictable that we're going to have more officers give their lives for the cause. I feel it's best to keep their base wage. I'm asking you guys to do the right thing and not take that away.
Thank you. Followed by Sheila Donahoe, and then A.J. Edmondson.
Mayor. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you. Yes, my name is Jerry Haas. I live in District Eight, Councilman Gallegos District. And by the way, I've voted for you twice. I'm also a retired veteran of the Arizona National Guard. We had three deployments to Southwest Asia, two to Afghanistan, one to Iraq, and those all happened between the ages of 47 and 51. And I'm also a firefighter for the city of Phoenix for the past 31 years. I'm stationed at Station Eight, Squad Eight. And to the citizens, the taxpayers of Phoenix, I want to say thank you from all the employees for putting a roof over our head. I am opposed to the plea proposal. I'm not... Not because I don't think they deserve more money. I wish all five bargaining units could get more money. I'm not opposed to the plea proposal because of things that were said last week about us and things that were said tonight. Hardly a week goes by that in the Arizona Republic, the Goldwater Institute, KTA R or Councilman DeCicio try to advance their political agenda on our backs. I'm opposed to the plea proposal because it drives a wedge in the team, and some people in this city and in this room would like that. 31 years ago, while I was on probation, probationary firefighter that is, at Phoenix Fire Station Number Five, Old Fire Station Number Five, 14th Street and Thomas, I had my first introduction to a Phoenix police officer. He was a motor officer, and he would come in occasionally, it was the winter months, to warm up his hands because it was cold out and have a cup of coffee. It was explained to me by my senior firefighters at the station that we were all part of the same team, and this kind of thing happens all the time. And I haven't forgot about that, police officer to this day. Councilman Noakowski, you coined the term "Team Phoenix," right in these chambers. There are five players on the team, units one, two, three, four, and five. I hope this council does what's best for the entire team, not just one player. Councilman Belenzuela, you hit the nail on the head. Us versus them can't be tolerated. Thank you. PD is understaffed. They should have two officers in every car 24/7. I support them in that concern. That is where I believe the resources should be focused. Mayor Stanton, on Friday, May 17, 2013, you honored two city of Phoenix employees for their actions at a helicopter crash a 1,500 block of East Roma that happened on May 2 of the same year. They pulled out two victims from the burning debris. Also, unfortunately, years ago, a city employee was killed while working on a streetlight. He was in a cherry picker. The cherry picker got hit by a car, and he succumbed to his injuries. The reason I bring up those two examples are because the entire team is made up of great employees who will step up when needed and who have given their all. The difference between the teams from Units One, Two, and Three, and police and fire, in police and fire, it's in our job description. Vice Mayor Waring, thank you for including fire in your comments about thinking that we shouldn't lose any pay cuts or anything like that. But if that were to happen, and any city employee would lose one job or any pay cut that we don't lose, no, thank you. United... On our website, it says, "United Phoenix Firefighters. We are united with all workers." And in closing, last week, one of the PD officers mentioned that you always remember your first line of duty death. I, too, remember my first firefighter line of duty death and those since. I also remember those firefighters that have succumbed to cancers after they retired from being exposed to toxins. And so for the record, my first PD funeral, in case there's people in this room that think fire is not sympathetic to the sacrifices they make, my first PD funeral was that same motor officer that came back, that came to my fire station, Station Five, back in 1983. That was Police Officer Kevin W. Forsyth, end of watch, Friday, September 7, 1984, and was killed by... Excuse me. Killed by directing traffic. Your firefighters are very aware of the term "ultimate sacrifice," but it's what we signed up for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haas. Neil Haddad will be next, followed by Sheila Donahoe.
Mayor and council, thank you, and thanks to all of you for being here tonight. Before Councilman Noakowski, you said that, you know, you thank people for bringing up the truth and for making sure that we keep you on task, and so I'm going to take you up on that. When you say that you can't trust the numbers, I... It's hard for us to understand that. You can ask whatever you want, and you can discern, and you can sift, and you can sort, and you can ask for staff to bring you more and more information. That's why we vote for you. We expect you to be able to get through all that. The way this has been set up, it was set up so that citizens come out on cue and react to programs that can never be cut. We can never cut senior centers. We can never cut rec centers. We can never cut air support or civilian booking. We can never do that. It's a disingenuous proposition. After that happens, the city manager rolled the dice on what was going to happen with fact-finding. And so it didn't turn out the way you wanted for police. And so by telling police that everybody does it the same way, after police got a positive report from the fact-finder, it's heads you win, tails... Heads I win, tails you lose. It's not recognizing the process. So for all of this, what we're looking for, why we're all here tonight, is because the process of the budget is broken. It was decided in advance for people who... A lot of people here tonight were talking about the food tax. Even if you're against the food tax, you should be up in arms about the fact that it was not even presented on the list on April 16th, so that we could address it over the next 60 days. You should be up in arms that discussion was cut off at that point, just by putting it or not putting it on the list. It would have solved the problems. It would have allowed you... And if you want to address other things that should be cut, things that don't belong in the budget, whatever. But really, we figured out that we had a problem the third week in January, and we're talking about offering up solutions days before this deadline is coming due. It doesn't make sense. The process is broken. It needs to be fixed. There need to be public workshops on the budget, months in advance, to figure out how all this works. That is your job. That's what we ask you to do. That's what you're failing at.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haddad. Sheila Donahoe, and then followed by A.J. Edmondson.
Good evening. I'm an officer with the police department. I've been an officer for 18 years and some change, 15 with the city of Phoenix. An officer last week mentioned to you guys a statement he was told while he was in training by another officer, and I'd like to add to that. That was, "We don't get paid for what we do on a day-to-day basis. We get paid for what we might have to do." What I'd like to add is, and for what it is that we might have to do, we may have to pay prices for the rest of our life because of that. When we struggle with a man with a gun or a knife that's on PCP, doesn't feel pain, well, we don't take drugs to combat that. Alls we have is our tools on our belt and a vest and our strength, which, as brought up earlier, we don't even get workout time on duty. It is up to us to pay our own fees, to go to a gym, or find ways to work out for our own time. Well, I'm one of those officers that's been hurt on duty. Back in 2010, my left tibia was shattered, probably never walked right completely again. And with that, I'm always susceptible to more injuries to that knee. I'm out here working with less. Our city has expanded. We lose more officers. More officers will retire soon. And then I see, for a weekend convention on beautification of city streets, we go and paint the streets for, I believe, $1.6 million, green and purple, not even colors that represent our city. Now people have drove all over the pretty little green bike lane, et cetera, that we spent so much money on. And of course, it's black because tire rubber is black. Why are we spending this money? We're spending money on golf courses that don't generate revenue. We have 1,000 golf courses that people can play. We can sell those off and generate revenue to take care of the things that we need to take care of. Somebody told me that not too long ago, 10 semis full of golf carts rolled into the bus hub down at 22nd Avenue. bus hub down at Twenty-second Avenue. I'm assuming those are to help out our golf courses that do not generate revenue but are revenue losers. But we can support that, but we can't support the people that do hard jobs every day, that risk their lives and get hurt and continue to work even after they're hurt, that when we are hurt, the possibility of medical retirement standards are so ridiculous and out of date. It's unbelievable. It's just unbelievable that we're not taken care of, and you won't even keep your word and give us our little bit of money back that you took before. And Mr. Zirker, with all due respect, you were the vice city manager before. I find it really hard to believe that you had no idea what Cavassos was up to and had no idea what the numbers were. It's not like we hired a city manager out of pocket from somewhere else to come in here that's just for the first time figuring out what these numbers are and why we're in such a deficit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, officer.